The Board of County Commissioners Boardwork Session. It is Wednesday, February ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. It is two oh one P M. For public attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel or join by calling three six oh two five two nine zero two zero pin number one, two, three, four. I am Carolina McHie, Chair of the Board. I am joined today by Vice Chair Ty Mensah, as well as Commissioner Gary Edwards, County Manager Ramiro Chavez in the boardroom, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell joining us via Zoom, as well as Director for Public Works Jennifer Walker, and many other staff members joining us here today, where we will be discussing Thurston County Lakes Program. And so with that, who do I hand this off to?
Tim? Allow me, allow me to frame the conversation, Madam Chair. As you may recall, in one of the Board of Health meetings back in two thousand and twenty-one, there were some recommendations from the Pest and Vegetation Management Advisory Committee, the P Mac, related to some of the increase of, of use of chemicals on, on, on treating some of the algae on, on lakes. So, hold on, I can open Commissioner Wilson. Give me a second. So the result of that conversation was the board was interested in finding out what type of recommendations the, the, the Pest and Vegetation Management Advisory Committee would like to bring forth for the commissioners to consider. Fast forward to early this year, both Long Lake and, and Lawrence Lake requested the board to issue a request for proposals to secure the services of our contractor to begin the normal activities this year to treat their lakes, normal activities, what they have been executing for the last few years. The board had a conversation related to issuing the request for proposals. And I believe that it was a desire by the board that before the recommendations toward the contracts to issue treatments, you would like to hear a perspective related to some of the proposed proposals as to what the Pest and Vegetation Management Advisory Committee would like to bring forth to the commissioners. The staff has put their heads together, and I believe they're going to be presenting with a plan that has been embedded by the, the P Mac. And within that context, I will leave it up to Tim or Patrick, who's going to take over?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tim Wilson, Water Resources Manager with Public Works. I will introduce the other staff here in a moment. But as Ramiro mentioned, this is a joint staff briefing with input and presentation by both the Public Works and Public Health and Social Services staff. And the reason for that, Public Works is charged with managing the two LMDs within the county, and Public Health is charged with managing the county's IPM policy. With us today, staff with us today include Art Starry, the Environmental Health Director with Public Health, Patrick Soderberg, Hazardous Waste Specialist Three, Paula Cracknell, our Aquatic Resource Specialist with Public Works. Also, as mentioned, the timing of the briefing is important. As on February twenty-second, Public Works staff will be recommending the board authorize Public Works to enter into contracts for nuisance vegetation control work for the county's two LMDs. That, that is similar work that has been done over the last few years. So you are likely familiar with that. Prior to that request, Public Works and Public Health, as recommended by the county manager, wanted to revisit the PIVMAC letter received by the board in July of two thousand and twenty-one. The letter, which is attached to your briefing packet, outlines concerns with increased pesticide use in county-managed lakes. We're going to be discussing four main topics today. The first topic is the discussion of the concerns raised, questions asked, and recommendations made in the PIVMAC memo of last June. Second would be the current process for considering and using herbicides in the county-managed lakes, the discussion of some of the factors leading to recent increases in herbicide usage, and then we're going to talk about some joint departmental recommendations for future herbicide use. So with that, I'm going to hand off to Patrick, who is going to talk about our first two topics.
Good afternoon. So one of the roles that I do is the Integrated Pest Management Program Coordinator. So I help set up the meetings for the advisory committee, take their recommendations and comments, and help deliver them to the board each year. So as part of the county's Integrated Pest Management Program, the part, each department reports annually on their pest control activities. And then each year, the advisory committee reviews that report and makes comments and recommendations to the board. The comments that the PIVMAC or the advisory committee made based on the two thousand and twenty report is they noted that there was an increase of herbicide use in our lakes and including some high hazard or a high hazard herbicide. They commented that the report doesn't devalue the control efforts so that they have a hard time relating the applications with the success or efficacy of the applications when they report back to the board. And since the policy emphasizes preservation of the natural system, they feel as though controlling of native plants is somewhat opposes the IPM policy and, and its goals. Next slide, Paula. So their question and recommendation that they made was, is there a way to reduce the overall usage of herbicides in our lakes? And is it possible to maybe go back to some of the lower hazard products? And their recommendation was that the county lakes program develop long-term management plans for the lakes so that when the prescriptions are written and they review the report each year, they can report back to how well the program is doing towards those goals identified in the long-term management plans. So that would be similar to what they do for Glacial Heritage Preserve. Next slide. So right now, the process for the lakes program or any other department to develop a prescription is they would identify a vegetation problem and establish a threshold or an injury level at which it needs to be controlled. The, then they would look at what control measures would be best suited, both chemically and or non-chemically, to control that vegetation problem. If there's chemical controls that are recommended for use or proposed for use, then the environmental health department would review those chemicals and identify any toxicity or environmental fate hazards, and then rank those from low hazard to high hazard. And then the, then the chemicals that have the least amount of hazards would be used preferentially over those with high hazards, as long as they're effective and controlling and meeting the goals of the plans and prescriptions. Once a prescription is developed, then they get reviewed by the advisory committee, and then they would make recommendations and comments to the Board of Health, who would ultimately make the decision to approve the use of that prescription, request that it get revised, or just reject it altogether. And once they're approved, then any department that needs to control that vegetation problem can do so. If you don't have any questions on the process or the comments from the advisory committee, I'll hand it off to Paula Cracknell, the Aquatic Resource Specialist for our lakes program.
One second, Patrick. Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
I know, I think Patrick got it laid out pretty good. Thank you very much.
Questions, Commissioner Mensah?
Nope, I'm tracking.
Okay, thank you, Patrick.
Okay, thank you for having us here today to talk about lakes management, Commissioners. So once a lake prescription is approved, the, the implementation of this prescription means that we can use the herbicides that are, that are approved in a lake when we determine that a problem species has reached a predetermined level deemed injurious. We monitor the lake monthly, usually between March and September, to determine what plant species are present in each zone of the lake. And we do this by a visual assessment and also by throwing rake pulls out to pull up all the plants to make sure that we aren't missing plants that might be hiding under some of the tall ones. If we determine that there is an area that has reached injury level, then we will develop a work order and a plan to use the lowest hazard herbicide to effectively control the problem species. Factors that have led to the increased herbicide usage in Thurston County's lakes basically boils down to a species shift. So in the mid-two thousand and ten's, Lake Lawrence and Long Lake began seeing the species shift, mostly in Class C noxious weed, pearly leaf pond weed. And the, this particular plant is resistant to the herbicides that were approved in previous prescriptions, and new chemical needed to be introduced to address this problem. Following the direction of the Board of County Commissioners in two thousand and seventeen, a prescription was written while allowing the use of Aquithol, which had a failed rating based on environmental health assessment. The Board of Health updated this prescription for Long, Long Lake in two thousand and seventeen and Lawrence Lake in two thousand and eighteen. And it's important to note that there is a, a great difference between the application of the fluoridone versus Aquithol. Fluoridone is a chemical that is typically applied in a hundred and fifty parts per billion, and it's spread out over three separate applications, while Aquithol is typically applied between one to five parts per million. There is a huge difference in, in the pounds of A I that go in because parts per million and parts per billion are very different. You have one part per million that's equal to about one hundred parts per billion, so we are putting more chemicals in the lake just by the application method that this herbicide requires. And that's reflected in our herbicide usage trends. So you see on this graph prior to two thousand and seventeen, when the board approved the use of Aquithol, we had fairly low levels of pounds of active ingredient that were in the lake. And then in two thousand and seventeen, you see a steep increase, and this continued on until two thousand and twenty. I do want to point out on this graph that in two thousand and nineteen, we only use Aquithol in Lake Lawrence. In Long Lake, we use a chemical called Clearcast, which unfortunately is no longer available on the market, which also is a problem with submerged aquatic applications. We do not have a great arsenal of chemistry that's available for treatment of submerged weeds. In two thousand and twenty, we did a larger treatment in Long Lake where we treated with Aquithol and sonar, and we also treated Lake Lawrence with Aquithol. So the combination of both of these lakes using Aquithol led to this, this steep bar that you see here. If two thousand and twenty was shown on this graph, it would show a decrease in herbicide usage again. We only treated with fluoridone in Lake Lawrence. We did not do any submerged weed treatments in Long Lake, and so the two thousand and twenty bar looks very similar to what you see here in two thousand and fifteen. An Integrated Aquatic Vegetation Management Plan is a very important document which not only identifies the goals for the lakes, but also steers the direction for how we will treat issues that arise in the lake. They are specific to the lake, and they provide an evaluation of the current lake characteristics and habitat. They identify issues such as excess vegetation, noxious weeds, nutrients, even issues such as increases of waterfall that may be on the beach. They set goals and action plans for managing identified issues. And we have IVAMPS in place for Long and Lawrence Lakes. They were created in nineteen ninety-five and updated in two thousand and four. However, those IVAMPS are in need of a revisive because lake characteristics have changed considerably since two thousand and four. An IVAMP is a very valuable document because it clearly defines the management goals and strategies for the lake and the surrounding watershed as well. It provides a baseline for issues and gives the county and the community a way of evaluating success of our program. Having a current IVAMP in place would address many of the concerns that the PIVMAC has raised, and it also allows for community involvement. The planning that goes into creating an IVAMP is very much so an integrated effort between the community, the consultants that are hired, and also the staff that manage the lake. The Department of Ecology has a limited funding source for grant funding for IVAMPS, and this is certainly an avenue that we can pursue when we try, when, when we try to redo our IVAMP that's currently there for Long and Lawrence Lake. The department response that Public Works would like to suggest is to require all new or renewed lake management districts to develop an IVAMP prior to engaging in any future vegetation control activities using herbicides. We would like to update the existing two thousand and four IVAMPS before the renewal of lake management districts that we currently have in place. Long and Lawrence Lakes will be renewing in two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six. And also to evaluate our current lake prescriptions, determine if they need to be revised based on the IVAMPS, which may mean writing new prescriptions for new chemistry or taking a look at the chemistry that we are currently using in the lakes. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
Yes, Paula, as you're dealing with these lake situations, the ones you really have to pay attention to are the more shallow lakes and like, I don't know, the deeper lakes like Lake St. Clair, Summit, and different ones. They don't seem to have any of these problems. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
It's not correct? Okay, good. Set me straight.
Aquatic vegetation really likes to grow along shorelines. So while Lake St. Clair is a very deep lake, they have pretty shallow shorelines, and I've received a lot of phone calls from the community, especially this last year, about lake vegetation, people wanting to know what's in their lake. Summit Lake, we've had phone calls as well, and we've actually had gone out there a couple times because somebody called in what they thought was variable leaf milfoil. Turns out that it's just a native milfoil, so it was fine. But no, you would imagine that vegetation issues are worse than shallow lakes, which is true. Shallow lakes have more of an issue because there's more room for the plants to grow. But deeper lakes can also have vegetation problems along the shorelines.
Okay, thank you. I rephrased that question quite right, but you did a good job of straightening me out. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Can you turn the screen, please, so we can see that?
Yes, sorry. Okay.
Thank you, Paula. Questions, Commissioner Mensah?
I just want to go back. This came up before, and I just want to make sure I understand on slide eight, the graph, the, I'm, I might be confused by how you're describing it, but the graph on the left-hand side says pounds of active ingredient, and I thought that that would control for what you're talking about, about how it has to be applied in greater quantity or whatever. But is that not true?
So the pounds of active ingredient is the total amount that's applied. And if we are applying Aquithol in parts per million, then we will have a greater, we will have a greater amount of pounds that's put into the lake per application. And if we have fluoridone, which is applied in parts per billion, it will have a reduced amount of pounds of A I that's put into the lake.
So the active ingredient is not mean concentration level of, you know, I'm a layperson, right? I mean, you know what, I hope my question's kind of clear. It's like if you, Patrick, I, I know you and I've talked about this in the past, so help, help me understand what, where we're at with this.
So there's two different things that are happening. Like Paula's saying, there's the concentration you put it in. The active ingredients is a way to try to normalize the data across all different types of chemical uses, whether it be a highly concentrated product or a not-so-concentrated product. So if you had a product that was watered down versus a concentrate that you added water to it, your application rate might actually be the exact same amount of active ingredient put out. But what's happening with this one is the one that's in the parts per billion, the fluoridone, is, is it, it's clay, so it has like point five percent of active ingredient where the liquid is a concentrate, so it doesn't have any buffer at all. So it's a higher concentration that you have to put out in parts per million, but it's almost entirely active ingredient as well. So the concentration in the product and the rate in which you put it out are, both end up being multipliers to make that bar graph go up. So you're, you have a higher concentration needed, and you're putting out a more concentrated product.
Okay. Well, well, you know, the, when this came up, whatever, you know, nine months ago, I fully understand why I'm confused because I don't really know anything about this stuff. But then what got me concerned was when the PIVMAC, and again, I don't know what their backgrounds are exactly or how much homework they do or how knowledgeable, but like, that's what the advisory committees are about, is to dig a little deeper, learn a little more. And they, you know, but, so whatever you're describing about that graph, it's a, you know, I could believe that I could be confused, but I got concerned that somehow the PIVMAC was being confused as well, because they shouldn't be as confused as I am about why that, that increase was concerning to them. So does that make sense?
Sure, and I, I think their concern is just that we're on, you know, it shows a trend of increasing use, and I think that's really what they were commenting on specifically.
Yes. Yes, and I just want to show you guys the, the graph for two thousand and twenty-one, just to illustrate this point a little bit more. Can you guys see the graph? Yes, okay, so this is two thousand and twenty-one, and you can see that the levels are far lower. And this is because we only treated one lake with fluoridone. We did not use Aquithol. And as Patrick was saying, Aquithol is a liquid, so it's a greater concentration. We're going to have more pounds of A I just based on the, the nature of that chemical.
And if this IVAMP, what, who gets, like, who draws this up? Like, who's involved in putting it together, the goals and the evaluation, et cetera?
So that would be a partnership between the steering committees on each lake, myself, and whoever we hire as our contractor to conduct the IVAMP. And it should be a registered winologist who does it.
I see Art's hand up. Do you want to add a clear?
I was just going to say that when we were preparing for this briefing, we reviewed the slide that has kind of drawn attention. As Paula said, there, there's a change in species of plants that needed to be controlled, which required a different type of, of herbicide or pesticide. And it just turns out that, again, it's a different active ingredient, but it needs to be applied a lot, you have to apply a lot more of it. In other words, it, it's, at the constant, at a low concentration, it won't be effective. It's something in the neighborhood, it varies depending upon the exact application of the lake, but it's somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty times as much. So that's why those charts, those bars are so high. But I think getting to what the PIVMAC said, and I would think I sat in on the meeting with them and then have reviewed the letter, what they're getting is that the, they weren't getting complete feedback about all the evaluation and things that were going on with the lake monitoring program. And so when they looked at the written information that was given to them, they saw this chart, and as Patrick said, the, the bars are going up. But they didn't know how to evaluate that compared to what the, the management strategy was. So the pesticide use is going up, but they don't really know what the, the strategy for the lake is, and they don't know if it's being effective. So I think that's what, what the points are on the letter. And so the idea of having a management strategy or updating these IVAMPS, so that way they show what the current status of the lakes is and what the, the, the goals and objectives are for managing the lakes, that would be very helpful for them because then they could compare this chart, the pesticide use, to what's being evaluated in the field to determine whether it's being effective. Because, you know, if the chart, if you look at the chart and then Paula reported back, everything's under control, it did everything we wanted to do, that would be really helpful information for them to know, but they don't, they didn't have all that information. So I think that's why having a current IVAMP would be very useful for everybody. It would help the IVAMP know, I mean, the PIVMAC or the Pest and Vegetation Advisory Management Committee, understand what's going on. They could then provide better feedback, both to the county staff and to the board as they're reviewing the, when you see the annual reports. I think in listening to this and be a part and participating in some of the meetings leading up to this, that's my understanding of it. I guess Paula and Tim and Patrick can tell me if I'm wrong, but I think that's, that's it. Because otherwise, again, and she looked at the graph that Paula, the one she put up before that shows the downward trend, again, without having this plan or this strategy, you really don't know how to relate that. It's like, okay, we, we use less, but does, does that mean that we controlled the weeds? So we didn't eat anymore? Did we not have a budget? Or, you know, why, why is that? We, you know, they had a lot of questions that couldn't be answered.
So one of the, one of the bullets on page seven says, following the direction of the B O C C in two thousand and seventeen, a prescription was written allowed, allowing use of Aquithol, which had a failed rating. What does that mean, failed rating? Failed, who failed what? And what, what does it mean?
Basically, so when I review pesticides, the policy itself uses the term passes or fails. So when it says that if a pesticide has in, what's the right words? Unreasonable hazards, then it fails the review. So if there's a hazard that's been identified in the policy as being an unreasonable hazard and that characteristic is in the chemical that's being proposed, then it fails the review. It's considered high in hazard. So this particular one for Aquithol, it's at the application rate, it's known to be injurious to fish. So that causes it to be high in hazard for aquatic organisms.
But there was no other option, so the board, I mean, you said that you're going to look at all, the, the process that was outlined was identify what can provide control, review them, and then pick the least hazardous. And, and we're saying that Aquithol, and, and I guess, I guess that means if it's unreasonable, even if it's unreasonable, we still do it because I guess it's more important to kill the weeds than to keep fish alive?
So the treatments are done in, in small parts of the lakes, so there's refuge for fish with any chemical. Anytime there's any chemical application that's put on the water for anything, even if it's a low-risk herbicide, there's going to be some change in not just local water chemistry, but also in how fish relate. And fish can swim away if we are managing our treatment areas to be small enough so that it's not damaging. And also, wh- wh- what I said earlier about there's a limit to the amount of chemistry that's on the market that we can actually use for submerged vegetation. At that time, Aquithal was the one that had the least injurious level compared to others. That could be introduced to treat the curly leaf pond weed. The herbicides are plant-specific. So we can't use fluoride to treat curly leaf pond weed, nor can we use it to treat general pond weeds, it has very low efficacy on those. And so we have to choose the appropriate chemical to treat the appropriate plant so that we are preserving lake ecology.
Where do these labels come from? Is it ecology labels, like the the scheme of calling something unreasonable, and you have to understand as a policymaker. Puts us in a very difficult position that I'm not doing a reasonable thing. I'm per se doing something unreasonable by by using a chemical that has a rating like that, so. You know, if i- if if the reality is we can use these things. If, you know, if the trade-off is valuable, then I don't think we should be using a category like unreasonable. Because obviously you didn't, you know. You're telling me right now that what we're doing is reasonable. Fish can swim away from it and we're using the best thing we can, so is that unreasonable? If we're calling it unreasonable, that is very difficult for us to be in that situation. So I don't know where this scheme and the labels come up with and what the different considerations are, like what trumps what, but I think you see the problem. With these categorizations and the and the situation that we're put in, a- and this all happened, you know. Uh, and, you know, at at a certain point, um, and I, and it seems to me that the PIVMAC. ought to have understood, you you're describing a species shift in the mid two thousand teens, why wouldn't the PIVMAC be aware of of that? I mean, they may not understand the efficacy of, I understand what Art's saying about, well, they couldn't see this amount did this result. But they should have understood the motivation for where, what the direction was, a- at least understanding that piece, and it just feels like they didn't. Based on the communication we got.
Go ahead, Art.
I get my, I've got my microphone on. Um, so a couple of things, the, I just looked at the policy, the policy reads, says that they. They turn, the actual term is considered higher degree of hazard, so as opposed to reasonable or unreasonable, but then. And it describes then the reasons that something would be considered to be high hazard and the reason that Patrick described would be one of them. You know, another thing could be if it was a, you know, carcinogenic or something like that for people, there's other categories there. And that's what Patrick reviews against the literature that's available and is is very skilled at it. Um, but that actually though is part of the reason I think the policy is set up the way it is, is that when. Either things are being applied to sensitive areas like lakes or uh. A chemical is going to be used that's high hazard, that's why the, that's why it goes to the Board of Health for review and approval. So that, at that time, the board chose to 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 uh approve the the prescription that allowed. The use of that material and it, and as you described, it really is a tough chap, tough question, because you have a noxious weed. Uh, you have a, an advisory committee, it's not the PIVMAC, but the lakes folks who want to see that the. The noxious weed is controlled along with their state laws that require some of them to be required, required, controlled. And the chemicals that seem to be effective for it are ones that, you know, have some, have some risks for fish. And so you have, that's that kind of balancing act of trying to figure out what to do and. And so that's, I, that's a bit of the background on the policy. And again, the the chip, the decision was made to approve the prescription back in twenty seven, twenty seventeen, Patrick. And I think, um, anyways, and Patrick could probably relay some of the history of some of the PIVMAC concerns and stuff, again. Uh, I'll just leave it at that, but I did want to clarify a couple of points on that.
Commissioner Edwards.
I don't know if this is for Art, Patrick, Paula, but. Doesn't the State Department of Ecology kind of oversee this as well, and they've, they've. I mean, they wouldn't let us put stuff on that they disapprove of, would they?
No, no, we, we use chemicals that are approved in Washington State. And Washington State has more strict regulations than the rest of the country as well. I do want to mention that what you're seeing, Commissioner Mincer, about having. Um, this language is unclear, when we do redevelop the IVAMPs, all of this will be addressed. And the IVAMPs need to be re- redeveloped for each lake when it renews, because it's also. A review of what kind of chemicals will be effective to what plants. And so the IVAMP says, no, you don't need to use Aquithal, we've, we've got this different chemical that you should consider. Then that's something that we can consider at that time.
Chair.
Can I ask a follow-up question, Commissioner Edwards?
Yes, ma'am.
Just one, one second, um. So Paula, with with that, what you're saying, I want to go back to when we're approving these contracts, right, for um. For there to be treatments on the lake. You said that it's a decision between the contractor, the LMD, and county staff. Um, and. When those treatments are being reviewed, is it just specific treatments? Uh, is there, you know, any? What I'm trying to say is, you know, can they go kind of outside the bounds of of those contracts, or is it very specific? On what treatments will be used for, for, you know, that season or for for that specific. Plant.
For the submerged weeds, it is very specific. Because we have to use a certain chemical to treat a certain plant and at a certain time as well.
How about for the not submerged weeds?
Well, with the new program that we started last year in Long Lake, the phosphorus management, that. Kind of went, I mean, the application itself, yes, the application is very black and white with the contractor, but the planning. And the future planning is something that we've worked very closely with them on, which I, I feel like is a little bit outside of. Just what's written in the work order, but for the submerged weeds. We need to be very specific and precise in order to have the most effective treatment to achieve the goals that we're trying to achieve. As well, there's always a continual conversation about new chemicals as they come up. That are useful for which plants. I have very strong interest in chemicals that have a low toxicological. Toxicological profile, um, just because i- if you can. Have efficacy with using a a lower amount of chemistry, that's great. The problem is, is that we still don't have things on the market yet that treat these plants. So we're using what is the least hazardous of what is available.
So if, you know, um, let's say the contractor and. If it's really prescriptive for submerged weeds, uh but not as specific for weeds that are not submerged. Then. But the the LMDs would still follow the advice for for the, from the contractor and county staff, is that correct? Is that the guidelines that they have to follow the, the advice from county staff?
Yes, yes, the county manages those contracts.
Okay. So in 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 a way, both Paula and you, Tim, are kind of approving those treatments that are. Placed into the lake.
Yes.
We engage the steering committees, or Paula engages the steering committee to um evaluate areas that need to be treated. And and what their needs are within those lakes and then uh. Public Works Staff is tasked with managing the contracts.
Go ahead, Commissioner Edwards, I know you had your hand up.
Uh, Paula said that we use the least hazardous uh that's available chemical. But regardless, it's all within what the state allows in Washington State. And a big piece of this is to be sure that the application occurs. As per recommended by whatever product they're using. So that's the timeliness of this whole thing, is to make sure that. We get it applied when it should be applied, so it is. As effective as it possibly can be without using any more than we have to to do the job. So, I mean, uh, whatever we do, we have to stay within the state's guidelines. And then make sure we get it on at the right time and the right amount. To accomplish the mission, and I did, I think that's what we're up against right now, is us delaying this. Uh, cuts into the timeliness, and the timeliness, if we miss the mark, can. Cause it to be a, a, a need for more chemical, I guess, is a good way to put it. But we don't want to do that, we want to get it done. The folks that live on these lakes, I can tell you, they're very, very concerned. About water quality as well as our staff is, so. I mean, we're just doing the best we can with what we've got while we're staying within the guidelines that the state has.
Commissioner Mincer.
Can we take a step back? Um, I I get lots of questions on this and I struggle to kind of a- answer them. These lakes existed for thousands and thousands of years and they were, you know, existed however they did in their natural condition. Are we? But with no chemical applications. Are we? Doing something to the lakes through our development, lack of stormwater management, et cetera? That's causing these problems and the need for the chemical applications, or do we have human-related? Um, uses that we want, like, you know, we want to swim, you know, and maybe. A thousand years ago, nobody was there that wanted to swim. I mean. Just stepping back, like, why is it that we're in this situation? And Paula, you've talked, you and I have talked in the past, you've talked to me about, for example, Black Lake and how. You know, we're doing this big chemical thing, but sixty-five percent of the, of it is something else, you know, or or. There would still be problems even if we weren't doing that, I mean, so there's mo- it, it seems like what I've learned is there's multiple. Factors going on, some human-related, some not human-related. But what is it at its core that's driving um our our need for all of this chemical management that didn't obviously occur? Hundred years ago.
This is a really good question, and it's also one that's very near and dear to my heart. Um, we are seeing a lot of issues in the environment, especially in aquatic systems globally right now. This is a global issue. We're seeing increased plant growth, increased algae blooms, increased development. And also increased water temperatures as well. So we are at a time where. We're being faced with a lot of issues, not just from human development, but also climate change itself. And what we're seeing happening in our lakes here in Thurston County in our neck of the woods very much so reflects this. We have increased plant growth, increased nutrients, we have these developed lakes that are used primarily for recreation. And people want to be out there swimming and don't want to get tangled up in the weeds and. We are basically in a position where we either intensively manage it. Or it will quickly go into the opposite direction that we don't want to see it go into. So as lake managers, it's very much so our job to be able to monitor these changes. And react quickly in any way that we can to be able to try to preserve the natural environment in a way that's not just helpful for humans. But also for all of the aquatic wildlife that enjoy the lakes as well. So. We're kind of in a, a difficult time right now globally on all of our aquatic systems, there's a lot of pressure. Um, in general on water and. It's, it's, it's a, it's a problem, it's a problem.
I can just add to that, I I agree with everything you just said, and to add a couple of points to that. Um, there's also been a change of expectations wi- within the communities over time. If you look at their revised IVAMPs, um originally written in nineteen ninety-five and updated. Um, ten years later, eleven years later, you do see a a a shift towards more management of the lakes. Um, and more management of the nuisance vegetation out there to. Um, to to better serve recreational needs within the lakes. So while while Paula speaks to, you know, temperature change and development, which is all. You all happening out there at an accelerated rate, um, there's also has been a change in in expectations to some degree as well. In how we manage uh the lakes, and I would just also say that as far as stormwater, there's been a lot of. Uh, a lot of discussion about stormwater and we're, uh, the stormwater utility is going to be meeting with some of the. Lake representatives to head off some, uh, what I would call miscommunication around stormwater. Uh, that has been occurring out there, but I would say that as far as stormwater management goes, at least from the county's. Uh, stormwater system, it's, it's being managed fairly well out there, so.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
You thought I'd keep going till I broke my arm? Hey, uh, everything that uh Tim and Paula and Ty have said, that's all true. Uh, Paula made mention of the excessive nutrient and, but what was not mentioned was. A hundred plus years ago, every one of these lakes were sawmill lakes. And lumber was cut, an unbelievable amount of lumber was cut on these lakes. As it was used as a sawmill pond, and then the excess. Uh, nutrient, the sawdust and the slab and all that was pushed back out into the lake. And that's where all this excessive nutrient is coming from, and we've even proposed in the past. Uh, doing some dredging, but that became cost prohibitive. So this is the next best thing to doing it right. This is all, well, maybe not all of it, most of it is mankind. Created, but the most of it is mankind created years and years ago. And now we're trying to deal with that problem. The best way with the best tools that we can do.
Any other comments?
I'm, I'm hoping that we can uh give staff the recommendation to move ahead because of the timeliness on this. We're obviously gonna look at this. Uh, or as time goes on, I think that's great, because like Paula said, there's always new products coming on. And we need to. Revamp uh everything periodically.
Informational session, is that correct?
Informational, at this point, we're not asking the board to provide direction, uh, what I, I wanted to work with uh staff is to make sure you have this briefing. Prior to the February twenty-second uh agenda where you have an item. To consider awarding the contracts uh for Long Lake and Lawrence Lake related to the treatment of this year. So today, the board is not, uh, is not being asked to provide any direction. But I I do ask, if if you need any additional information. Before you put it, you be put in the position to vote on the award of the contracts for this year, please let us know.
I, I guess I do have a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, sir.
Paula, are we gonna be sufficient in time if we wait to give you authority on the twenty-second?
Well, to be, no, um, if there is more holdback in these contracts, it will, it will make an issue.
Okay, excuse me. So I'm gonna tell the county manager, I I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we. Allow staff to move forward with this proposal. Now, it's a democratic process. We can see where my seatmates go on that, but uh we're in a regular meeting, I'm told, that we can make decisions, is that right, county manager?
Yeah, you can, you can make decisions, but uh what uh the action, the, the, uh, that you will be in front of you on the twenty-second. Is to award the contracts. At this point, you have not seen the contracts. You don't know the amounts. The staff is working on that and they're bringing those items to you for your consideration on the twenty-second.
Okay, well, I think we ought to do it faster than the twenty-second, because I don't like the bureaucratic process getting in the way of efficient operations. So I know you like to go through the bureaucratic process, that's not my way of doing business, you and I have a difference.
No, no, sir, it's not a bureaucratic process, this is the, the, the schedule that we laid out for you. No, no, sir. It's not a bureaucratic process. This is the 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 schedule that we laid out for you. I'm not delaying anything the board is considering.
Well, but it's holding us up as far as getting the job done right in a timely fashion. And uh, accomplishing the mission. That's that's what my concern is. I don't understand why we can't give them a thumbs up. And move forward with getting the prep work done and okay, maybe do the final awarding of the contract on the twenty second. But I don't want these folks sitting there spinning their wheels. Between now and the twenty second when they could be doing something productive, that's all.
Are these Aquatol contracts we're doing dealing with? I thought there was stuff going on with alum treatments and other things. Can you clarify what it is that need that has the time sensitivity that? We are going to be taking up on the twenty second?
Yes, sir. So the contracts that you will be reviewing on the twenty second are solely for submerged weed treatments. At this point, um, we all have a phosphorus contract for review at a later time, but these will specifically be for herbicide applications. Using fluoridone and Aquatol in Long and Lawrence Lakes.
And do we have, we have review through our process of how. One kind of chemical for submerged weeds interacts with other kinds of chemicals for phosphorus. Whether or not those are a good combination to use together?
No, there's no specific literature that I have come across that. That actually goes into that. So when you treat weeds, they will start to decompose and. The plant matter releases nitrogen into the system. There's a negligible amount of phosphorus that they release into the system when they start to die back. Um. We don't typically do uh, phosphorus treatment at the same time. The phosphorus inactivation is specifically for the soluble reactive phosphorus in the lake. That it's not an herbicide, it's not even, it doesn't even have a label. Um, for that and it's not reviewed by PIVMAC because it's not considered in, it's not an herbicide.
Isn't there a third layer, though? Isn't there like submerged stuff you put on submerged vegetation? Then there's stuff you put on. Vegetation that's not submerged. And I remember we got into this with Black Lake because we were taking up the alum treatment with their committee. And they were getting a notice about use of, and it was glycerfate or wherever, that really. You know. Toxic stuff that they're freaking out thinking that's what the board was taking up, if you remember that. And so isn't there like three levels in terms of where, three levels of sort of. What? What we use in three different places in a lake. One is across the whole lake to deal with the phosphorus. One is to deal with certain places where there's submerged weeds and then there's like. Around the edges where the weeds are sticking out, you can use some of this nastier stuff that because it won't get in the water and. Stuff like that. So is, am I right about that? There's kind of three levels of. Of evaluations of chemical treatments?
Yeah, that's a good way to look at it. So we have um, foliar applications which occur to emergent plants, so. We can treat lily pads or yellow flag iris on the shorelines or close to the shorelines using a foliar application where we actually spray. The chemical on top of the plant. The submerged weeds, it's injected into the water. To the plants or if it's a pellet, then it's thrown out over that and it just slowly dissipates into the water. The phosphorus inactivation releases the the phospholack alum, the clay compounds into the water column itself where it. Where it goes, where it sinks down and makes a block on the bottom, which prevents the phosphorus that's in. The lake sediment, like Commissioner Edwards was describing, from releasing into the water column. So, yeah, there's different applications for different um, types of plants. And we don't do them in tandem. So if we're doing an Aquatol treatment, that's going to happen on April seventeenth. We're not going to do a phosphorus inactivation on April seventeenth. So there there will be time between treatments that happen. And typically, we only use one submerged chemical in the lake each year. Twenty twenty was just an anomaly year where we chose to do fluoridone and Aquatol at the same time. Well, at the, in the same time. Not at the same time. Let me retract that in the same season.
Paula, Paula, can I add add to that? So all of these applications are um. Are managed under our ecology permit, our aquatic plant algae management permit. They are not unique uh, to these lakes, so in other areas of of the state operating under similar permits and under ecology's purview. There are multiple applications occurring, so. Um, this is not unique, unique to Long Lake and ecology would have evaluated any kind of. Uh, cumulative effects from phosphorus sequestration and herbicide applications of of this type. And then getting back back to the timing of the contract, we had originally planned on bringing this forward on the fifteenth. We delayed it by one week to have this briefing. I don't believe, Paula, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe. Uh, if we, if the board approves moving forward. With the execution of a contract on the twenty second, it would put any of the treatments in jeopardy. Where where we would be concerned is. If those got into early to to mid March, then we would run into some issues there, so. No urgency from public works part to move forward be before the twenty second. Um, we would just. You know, uh. Uh, want to share any information, additional information you need before the twenty second if if possible.
I I just want to say as a general proposition, my heart just starts to beat fast and I get really nervous when we think that we can, you know, engineer our way when. Human beings think they can engineer their way out of, you know, destruction of the natural environment. I'm dealing with it on. Blood control issues, on salmon recovery issues. I mean, you know, low flow in the stream. Oh, let's build this. Managed aquifer thing and let's let let's inject water over here and have it filtered through like. No, let's let's stop doing the stuff that's like, you know, taking the water away or that or they want to mitigate the dam by creating all of these. Because the temperature issues are so severe because of the 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 deforestation, they want to create these cold water refugias. To try to give these little artificially cool places for Sam. I mean. That, come on, I mean. And so it's just a philosophical thing. When I start to hear that we're going further and further and further down the rabbit hole of trying to. To to use, to try to. To try to. Solve damage to natural systems, it doesn't work. And sometimes you don't even understand what you're doing. You don't understand the long term effects. Uh, I'm sure we're acting reasonably with the information we have following ecology's guidance, but I get very, very nervous. When we're pouring one layer, two layers, three layers of chemicals to try to manage a lake because we, you know, we want to swim in it or we want. To, you know. Build more houses on it and things like that. So. That's just where I'm coming from when I'm just really. I get really nervous when I start to hear about all of this layer after layer of of macro engineering.
I understand that. Um, but I also would just like to suggest that we are. At a time in. In history that is not, that is unlike others and this could be a whole different conversation, so I'll try not to get deep into it, but. If we don't try to do things to help the environment, then we are failing the environment and. There's, there has to be something that we try to do because we're at a point where we've had deforestation, we've had development, we've had destruction. To aquatic systems. And so we have to try to fix it in whatever methods that we can and. That is, it's important to do that so that we can continue to have a world where everybody feels. At peace. And where we're looking out for endangered species and looking out for drinking water and human health. And. Also, um, thinking about the three layers of chemicals. It's important to understand that the chemistry that's applied in the lakes, it has a huge dilution factor and it dissipates. So there's a point to which fairly quickly where there's no chemical left in the system. It's applied to the plants, the plants take it up. And then that's it, the plants die. So it's not like we're applying chemicals to stay in the water all summer long. So I'm not sure if that was your thought process on that, but it these these um. Effects from using chemicals or phosphorus mitigation um, products are very short lived in the system.
Commissioner Edwards, I saw your hand up.
I I guess, uh. Kind of continuing that thought that Commissioner Mensah uh, mentioned about trying to fix the environment. Uh, I have to say, though, that's exactly what we're trying to do. We're trying to fix mistakes made. Many, many, many years ago. And uh, if we don't try to fix it, it's never going to get fixed. It's just gonna. Continue to deteriorate, so. I don't, it's, it's always the right time to do the right thing. And uh, the right thing wasn't done some time ago. But I believe we can do the right thing to correct some things. Definitely not everything.
Okay, so it is, thank you. It is three o'clock and we have another session, so. Um, if commissioners have questions, I would encourage them to meet with staff. Uh, before the twenty second as Tim recommended. Um, so with that, we are adjourned and I'll see you all in a little bit. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.